Good evening and welcome, everybody. It is with great pleasure and privilege that I sit here tonight on this beautiful February 6th. The time is now 6:31 and I call this meeting to order. We're going to start with our invocation led by Reverend Alfredo Benavides from Stonegate Baptist Church, and then our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Robert Molina. Would all stand.
Let us pray, our heads and close our eyes. Father, we want to thank you first of all, my Lord, for this moment. Thank you for being God and for being our Father through Jesus Christ, our Lord. And we thank you for the people that you have appointed to serve in this council, my Lord. We ask that you guide them with your Holy Spirit, that every decision that is made, my Lord, is made under your guidance to benefit our community. Lord, we thank you again. We receive the answer of prayer and we give you the honor and the glory, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Let's get everyone face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. And I believe we have one. A citizen who has a request for city services or other items of concern which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager may choose to address the council. Citizens who wish to address the city council about items on the agenda will have three minutes to express their position. Please indicate agenda item number on which you wish to comment. All presentations and discussions should be directed to the city council and all questions to the mayor. Any complaints and/or discussion about individuals, personnel, council members, city staff, or other persons would be out of order and will not be heard by the city council at this time. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual filing the complaint and will be addressed pursuant to Alice Personnel Policies. Please approach the speaker's stand, state your full name and address when you begin your remarks so that the official minutes will record your appearance before the city council. If you have written notes you wish to present to the mayor and council, please furnish an extra copy to the city clerk for the official files. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council. Although council cannot take specific action on citizens' comment topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic and council may have the item placed on a future agenda for action or refer the item to a board, commission, or committee, or refer the item to staff or study or conclusion. Thank you for your cooperation. At this time, we'll hear from Mauricio Garza.
Good evening, council. Mauricio Garza II, 509 Air Street, Alice, Texas. Believe it or not, I'm grateful speaking to you on this side because I have a couple of suggestions I'd like to throw out. Most of our citizens have been through a roller coaster ride for the past nine months. We've gone through three elections costing us over $50,000. And what we need to do now is look at the gifts that have been presented through us through these storms. It seems like the turmoil has passed. And while the sun is coming out, we should jump on the opportunities we have now. We've got two council members that were just elected during the half point of your previous councils. So why not jump on the opportunity of creating a stagnant election? We allow them to serve their two-year term next year. When the two council members and the mayor come up, have them go for reelection. That way, it guarantees us, the taxpayers, the opportunity of never having entirely fresh council and new mayor and the rocky start that comes with that. Another thing that would be great to do is, since we do have four placements, is why not split up the city by population into four places? That way, council member running for that place can run from that position itself, guaranteeing fair representation to all of our taxpayers in the city. For many years, and it's open record, you can see, past decades, we've had mayors and councils that all lived within four, two miles from each other. And that makes it hard to give fair representation to everybody. At least by splitting up, we have that opportunity. Another thing, and this is to the people at home, you should be upset at your newspaper for not being here today. Our newspaper, Freedom of Speech, is the only thing that is protected by the First Amendment, the freedom of speech. And that was created, that way we have the ability to speak about controversial things, not the weather. And the fact that our newspaper is not here and that they didn't create a debate for our special election was cheating the people of Alice. So, these are just ideas that I figure I'd throw out there. As citizens, we're very powerful because this is our city. Our representatives are our servants, and we must hold all of them accountable. Our city is closer to bankruptcy than it is to having their property taxes lowered. So we need to make sure that these individuals that are here do the best job to their ability, which I believe they will do, to make sure that whatever decisions are made are on our behalfs. I thank all of y'all for your dedication, your time up here, and everybody at home who went to vote. Voting is the most important thing. Our last election, there was only 1,291 votes. And not to sound gruesome, and I read this somewhere, but Jim Jones Town was 918 people. So, thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Okay. At this time, we'll hear public announcements from council. Ms. Carrasco, you have anything to share with us today?
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burke? Mr. Crisp?
Not at this time, thank you.
Ms. Molina?
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll go on to agenda item number three, presentation of National African American History Month proclamation. So if we can get our members who will receive your proclamation to come forward? Sure. Council, join in?
Sure. I'd love to.
He's tall enough to get the bat. I ain't tall enough to get the bat.
All right. Everybody good? Yes? Proclamation from the office of the mayor, which is me, whereas February, we celebrate National African American History Month to honor the significant contributions African Americans have made to our great nation, and whereas annual observance is an opportunity to remember the challenges of our past, but also to honor countless African American heroes who inspire us to shape our country's future, and whereas our responsibility as citizens is to address the inequalities and injustices that linger, and we must secure our birthright freedom for all people. And whereas this year's theme, African Americans in Times of War, calls our attention to heroic contributions of African Americans during our nation's military conflicts, from the Revolutionary War to present day operations. Now, therefore, we have resolved, I, Jolene B. Vanover, Mayor of the City of Alice, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2018 as National African American History Month. Thank you. I might like to make two announcements.
One more.
One more. Okay.
Good? Okay. Should we like to make a couple announcements?
I'd like to make two announcements in celebration of Black History Month here in Alice, Texas. We are going to be having two different events here in Alice. The first one is going to be this coming Saturday, it's going to be February 10th, and we're going to be having breakfast with the candidates. It's going to be from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. It will be held at True Life Missionary Baptist Church in the Fellowship Hall, and we're inviting everyone to come out and meet the candidates, have breakfast with the candidates, and we're inviting the voters to come out so you can meet the candidates and know who's going to be doing what, and let's voice your opinion on that. And the next event we will have will be February 24th. February 24th will be our Black History Program. It will be at the Coastal Bend College, Alice campus, and the time is at 3:00. We'll be having food, we'll have fellowship, we're having fun, we're having games, skits, and it's educational. So that's why we have Black History Month, so we can all find out a little bit about inventions, scientists, music. And, yeah.
Everything.
Everything. So, just come out, and this is something we do annually here in Alice, and as most of the council people, everyone knows, in Alice, we do this every year, and this year's going to be bigger and better. So we want to invite everybody to come out. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item number four, here presentation from Juan Aveja, Chamber of Commerce Executive Director regarding the Alice Convention and Visitors Bureau 2018 Budget and Consider and Act Upon Approval of the 2018 Budget.
Degreee Mayor, Degreee Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman, Councilwoman. Congratulations, Mr. Burke, welcome back. Mr. Molina, thank you for taking on this auspicious job and joining our council. We look forward to greater things from the city. I'm here on behalf of our Board of Directors. With me today is our membership Vice President, Sandra Bowen. I don't know if our Board President is here, I hadn't seen her. By behalf of the Board of Directors, who proposed the budget, they're the ones that created the budget, I'm just here to present on their behalf. Numbers reflect, they were set back in November, and I'm here to present them for today. In 2017, the CBB Chamber of Commerce was recognized by the Texas Chamber Execs for the fourth consecutive time. This time, we brought two first place and one second place. Our first place was in marketing, how we market the city, and promotions of, using our billboards, our print media, our social media, television ads. We received a first place for our newsletter, and then a second place in general marketing. So very proud of what we done with the CBB to promote the City of Alice. In 2017, we added three billboards at the beginning of the year at the request of the council. We added one in Laredo, and that's a digital billboard, as well as one in McAllen, which allows us to do more current for our events, and we can change them as we will. We have one on the 77th standalone billboard, and of course, the one on 77 North and the one on Tintita. We're also looking at adding two more billboards this year, one in Sinton, 77 facing south. That's a digital billboard, and the one also inside of the Corpus Christi International Airport at the baggage area. So if people are coming out, they can see our events are coming on. So it's more additional that we want to think about. Print media, we did quite a bit of advertising on print media, targeting the north, and Guest Quest magazines, they target the winter Texans throughout the year in Missouri, Tennessee, Michigan, Canada. We've done many ads in the Texas Traveler Magazine, that's targeting our hotel stays. The Texas Tourism and Stays, that's another travel magazine. The Texas Events Magazine, that's the one that's put on by the State of Texas. We use that one in promoting all our events, and those are done quarterly. We've also done the USA Today Travel Magazine, that's one that we did starting last year, and that's been very beneficial because the USA Today does regional one in the Dallas area, the San Antonio area, Houston area, along with the northeast side of the U.S. that we, those are the ones that we targeted. We've also been doing the Regional Tourism Council Magazine, the Ritz Travel Magazine. The Ritz Travel Magazine is the one that's inside of our hotels. The Texas Golf Magazine to promote the golf course, Wings Over Texas to promote the airport, and of course, all our local events. There's special events, we did a lot of granting, vending this year. All our events submitted applications at the start of the process before they came to council for further review. They had to make sure that they presented a budget, how they were promoting their events, and make sure that they had insurance for their event. Grant funding, how to meet the criteria of Tax Code 351, that is the aim of the board, is got to create an overnight stay, or the probability of creating an overnight stay. We market our hotels, we offer a card where they will sign in and tell us where they're from. This is just a recent one, this is at the Hunter Roots one. This one came from San Antonio, Pearland, Flugerville, San Antonio. So you see, people are coming into town for our events. And that, we, the way I've targeted our events is we have our major events, those that have 50 hotel stays or above, those, that's going to be like your Hunter Roots, your Twin Cam Jam, your Street Rods, those we know are going to bring in the big rooms. Then you have your moderate size, your 24 to 49 rooms, I'm sorry, 25 to 49 rooms is your moderate ones, and then you have the smaller ones. And that's what we're trying to target more and get more. What's happening now is that we're seeing a lot of third-party booking. So they're trying to get the cheaper rates. We offer the special rates already, but when they do a third-party booking, say through Travelodge, they're bypassing the questionnaire cards. So, we're going to try to figure out a way of getting those, get a true accurate count of our hotel stays. We continue to promote the, the CBB promotes City of Alice. Just last month, I was in McAllen, where over 9,000 winter Texans were there for a two-day travel show. Because of Hurricane Harvey, we lost quite a bit of our winter Texans that were in the coastal bend area. Last year alone, 6.2 million was spent by winter Texans from November through April in South Texas down the valley. 2.2 was spent in our coastal region here. We're going to miss that 2.2 this year because they're not here. Most of them have gone south. Our aim was to get them to stop here. We know we're not, we're not a tourist facility. We don't have the big convention centers. But our aim is to get them to stop here, gas here, eat here before they even head south. So that's our aim on those magazines, come into Alice. We're very blessed to have very great people in Alice. I met a lady in McAllen who was headed down, they were coming from Wyoming, and they had an accident just out of Alice. The DPS trooper stopped and helped, the deputies were able to bring them into town, get a hotel. They stayed here for three days because they had their RV, had to get it fixed. So they were very commensurate with Alice and very pleased on how they were treated by the folks of Alice. So we're blessed to have that. We are members of the Texas Travelodge Association, all our hotels are members of Texas Travel Lodge Association, that offers more added exposure to our local hotels. That includes all of them. We pay over $4,000 just to get them annually. We're also a member of the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau. That's something new that we added this past year. In fact, we're going to have visitors from their area very soon to visit us. And the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem already know about when they're coming. We sent the Finance Department with their reporting of the report to the Comptroller's Office this past year. That was something that's enacted by the last legislature. Before, we didn't have to do a formal report to the state, to the comptroller on our expenditures. Now we do. And I was able to help them out and get it in there with our 50-day window that we had to do before the end of the year. Lastly, our website, we've never hit 2 million people in our website. This past year, we had 2.2 million people visit our website. It's always been 1.7, 1.7. People are going through Alice, they want to see what's going on, and that's our aim. We want to make sure that they actually stop here. So, we're doing our job, you know, to help them with the city. And that's my annual report to y'all. Now we're going on the budget. Any questions so far?
Counsel, any questions?
No.
Okay. We'll break down the budget line item by item. Number one, that is the monthly fees that we pay to Byron Blair to out of the books, make sure they're good. Every other year, we do an audit review done the even number of years. So this past, this coming year, we're going to allocate $4,000 coming out of one of our line items. We're not going to change what we're asking for funds, it's going to remain the same. But we're going to move some funding around to pay for that audit review. They'll do it after the tax season. Leon McNich and Byron Blair have been doing this for the last 17 years for us, so they're very familiar how to do it. Our signage and billboard will stay the same, we're going to continue because we're going to get some discounts on some of our billboards because we've been with them for quite a while. Our office supplies will stay the same. The Winter Texans Fish Fry, we'll know more about that as we target how many winter Texans are in our area. We asked our hotelers how many are here and how long they're going to be here. Of course, grants and sponsorships, we thought we were going to have 30,000, we allocated 30,000 last year, we only used 19,000 this past year. We're hoping more people will apply. We already know some of the people are already asking, how can we get more money? So, we juggle some of the money to make sure the balance, we stay within the balance. At the end of the year, we're going to wind up with, last year, we had a surplus of $3,900. We're able to stay within our means. We have been at this constant rate for the last two or three years now. Is there anything that y'all would like to see the CBB to do more of or less of? You know, that's what we're here for. As long as it creates an overnight stay or we meet one of the nine criterias in the tax code. We already know that, we already have requests in for this coming year, early on. Our Lady of Walupes is already asking for funding. Pan American Golf Association is already asking for any, Twin Cam Jam's already been asking us when we're going to start. So once this gets approved, we'll start the ball rolling for all these events, get them early. Any questions on the budgets as we present the numbers?
Mr. Crisp?
Yeah. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that you kind of touched on it momentarily, just a minute ago, but it looks like you came in just about 1,250 bucks under your billboards. You said you're going to be adding two. You mentioned something about discounts. That's going to make up the difference. Keep you in budget.
We've already, I already counted the numbers. So we can stay within that line item.
Okay, good. Yeah, because that's a, that's a pretty stagnant one, that you can spend a certain amount every year. It's not one of those ones that's going to flux like postage. I noticed that last year, postage.
Postage was horrendous last year because the travel centers in Harlingen, in East Texas, and North Texas actually requested for more information on our area. So we sent the Alice Magazine, we sent the, some, a lot of brochures. So those are big bulk items we have to send out, so. But it's good to see that people are picking them up, so.
And then, what was the other one I had for you? Earlier, you mentioned the sponsorships. Can we just go through that process? Would it be okay to, I mean, because we only gave out roughly 10 sponsorships last year, and that's what makes up the bulk, the really the largest chunk of what is the budget that we allot out of, out of it, it really consists of a good chunk of that, is $30,000. We want people to come and request this money. That doesn't mean you're going to get it.
Correct.
But we want to promote these things, we want to do it. We put a policy in place last year in order for it to be done. Juan, can you talk to the process that we have in place, please?
All entities must admit their application through the CBB. The board will review them, make sure that they meet the criteria of the tax code. It's got to create a probability of creating overnight stay. Unfortunately, last year, we had several that applied for funding and were denied by the board because they didn't yet meet one of the nine criteria. We also changed, we had a 60-day policy. We added a line item where the board will have the authority to amend that 60-day policy. We had a 60-day policy because sometimes we don't have a quorum to meet, so it's got to wait another, next meeting or, so, for emergency purposes, say we have an event that's coming up in April, and they forgot to do the 60-day policy, and they submitted it in March, we can at least review it and make sure it's go. So, that's why we're going to see that, keep that up there.
And then, after that, they can apply for up to 10,000 total. However, the chamber can only allot?
1,800 is what we do.
1,800.
Up to 5,000. This interim city manager has authority to approve. Anything over 5,000 has to come to the council for approval.
So, there is money there. We have it to give, the 1,800 comes out of your budget. Anything thereafter actually hits our CBB budget in City Hall, and therefore, we can, we have an amount that we're willing to really dish out every year in order to make these events great for not only people coming in, but our local citizens also actually get to enjoy them as well, so.
In the last legislature, we're also very fortunate that the legislature amended the tax code again to include downtime revitalization. Keep in mind, the tax code has to break down. 50% of what is on the budget has to go to promoting the city or the events. So that's why you see the 30,000 in the billboards, it's got to be at least half of what we're asking. The rest is broken down into segments. Does it promote the arts? Does it, is it a festival? It's just a long criteria. Sporting events now qualify. Speaking of sporting events, I'm working with the Pan American Golf Association for 2019. They're looking to bring in their winter meeting down here. Keep in mind, there's 44 chapters throughout the U.S. Each one brings at least two or three golfers into Alice. That would create at least 300 hotel stays. We're going to work with the hotelers. We already put a preliminary packet for them. They made the first step already. We did a breakdown of city history. I broke it down from restaurants, I gave them a nine-page folder with items of Alice. Now they want a PowerPoint, so for their next presentation. They will present in Odessa in April, so we're going to do a little video as well for them. They're going to be asking for more money for the two events, one to promote just this convention that they want to have, and then one for their golf tournament later on in the year. So, bringing those heads in the beds, you know, bringing 300 golfers, they're going to bring their wives. We're going to, we're going to hopefully have a lot of stuff for them. We've already been blessed that the VFW has offered their facility for them to have their convention in there for three nights, so. Working with our community, you know, to get this working.
Very good. Mr. Crisp, any other questions?
That's good for now.
Mr. Molina, any questions? Mr. Burke? Ms. Carrasco? And you may have mentioned it, Juan, I'm sorry if you did, grants and sponsorships, we went from 19,500 to 30,000?
Yes, because we're going to be asking, we're going, what we're going to do is, once it's approved, we're going to send letters to everybody who is possibly having an event, get their applications in their hands now, even if the event is in October, November. If they have their application in hand, they know they're having an event, submit it early so we can get it approved and bring it, in the one moment you can get it to council. So we're not rushing through all that. And if we do that, that'll surely get all the funding done.
One more, just a quick clarification, because some of this is new to some, to sum up here. The CBB budget is off of a fiscal year, right? It is January through December. It's a calendar year as opposed to the city budget, which is October to September. So, yeah, just so that everybody can see why it kind of doesn't really always coincide, so we're good to go.
And we did this back in November, and then unfortunately, we had the election, we had to wait. That's why the numbers are a little off right there.
And when you send those letters out, I honestly think that they should go out to even the ones that didn't necessarily qualify, because if they can improve or increase their, the size of their event and do whatever, they don't need to be left out. I mean, you know, one rejection isn't a turn down for the rest of their events, so let's see what we can do to get these guys to boost them a little bit.
The key to this is it's got to create a probability of creating an overnight stay. And that's the wording from the tax code, a probability, whether it's one, 50, 100 stays, you know, if it creates overnight stays and it meets one of the nine steps of the criteria, then, you know.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be a two-day event or a three-day event?
Not necessarily. It all depends on the event, and the time of event.
Like, for example, a 5K that they're going to wake up at 5:00 in the morning, perhaps they came in the night before.
5K's a little tricky, because they're going to come in early and leave right away. The tax code barely mentions it, but we're going to address that to our attorney when that comes about, because he'll have the final word in interpreting the law.
Some of the good ones are the dances and stuff that kind of last late into the night, and hopefully people aren't driving home out of town intoxicated and ended up enjoying one of our hotels here in town, so.
Like the Hunter Roots, they have a two-day event, and, I mean, they fill up the hotels.
Every room.
The Twin Cam Jam, it was, you know, I mean, we had nothing going on. At the same time, we had the Alliance having their convention here as well. They had Friday, Thursday and Friday, then Twin Cam Jam had Friday, Saturday, so we just intermeshed everybody together and made it work.
Juan, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The nine criteria, where could somebody find a list of those?
That is Tax Code 351. You can find it online on the Secretary of State page. It's under Municipal Hotel Occupancy Tax. It's Title III, Subtitle D, Chapter 351, Subchapter A. And from there, the 72-page document will tell you, I've got it broken, I would carry it with me, because somebody's always asking a question, but I have it broken down and highlighted what can be done, what can't be done.
We'll pull it and we'll send it out to the council for y'all's records.
If I'm not mistaken, it's actually attached to the back of the ordinance that we passed, that we put in place.
Yes, yes.
So it wouldn't be a bad idea to redistribute that ordinance.
So going back to the downtown revitalization, could you give us a synopsis of how that would work, how the process?
I won't know till tomorrow till we meet with the CEO of the TACBB. She'll tell us more about what's going on and bring us up to speed on the tax code and what changes came about.
Very good. I'm curious to find out.
They're actually on their way to McAllen for a convention, and I asked her, why don't you stop in Alice? You're just, it's on your way down. It's okay.
Nice.
So always in contact with TAB, Texas Associated Business, the Texas Chamber, TACBB, or the Texas Travelodge Association. So always, you know, their phone call away.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions, counsel? All right. All right. Mr. Juan, thank you so much.
It is an action item.
Congratulations to Mr. Juan O'Hara. He received an award also in recognition for all his, um, participation and he grew, I guess, in the, with the chamber.
Yes, those, those were the, the, one of the Texas Chamber execs. We had three awards and, um, very honored, you know, to be recognized by our peers in the state of Texas, a small town, and he was actually embarrassed when he said, Alice again, and Alice again. I'm sorry.
Tell him to shout it.
I was like, come on, it's like, you know, we work hard, you, um, just wanna make Alice shine.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is an action item for the, to, for the budget.
All righty, very good. Thank you, sir.
I need to take a vote. We need to go.
We need to.
Approve the budget. Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the CBB budget as presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Uh, motion stands as stated. Thank you. Budget approved for twenty eighteen for CBB. Agenda item number five, here's status report on December twenty seventeen, month-ending financial statements and summary of funds.
Mayor and council, this evening we'll have our Director of Finance, Mr. Roland Ramos, and Ms. Vanessa Rivera, the Accounting Manager, present the financials to council. As IT gets the projector ready to go, um, and the screens toward, toward, turn toward the audience, I wanted to take a few minutes to walk you all through the financial packet that is in your, um, in your binder. Behind the summary page will be page one or page two of eleven. This is the consolidated fund summary for the three months ending December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. It'll include your general fund, your solid waste operations, utility fund, airport fund, golf course fund, hotel occupancy tax fund, and the multi-use complex. Your left column, on the far left, is what has been budgeted. The second column, twenty eighteen year-to-date, is all expenses and revenues that have hit as of December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. At this point in time, budgets and revenue should be at about twenty-five percent of expenditures. As you move through your packet, you will come across additional information. What Mr. Ramos has presented or will be presenting to you all tonight are slides and going more in-depth into each thing, and of course, please ask questions.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Basically, I'm just going to, uh, present three slides that is going to recap the summary sheet that Ms. Lopez just mentioned. Most of y'all have heard a, uh, financial presentation with the exception, I think, Mr. Molina. Uh, our fiscal period ends on September thirtieth and it begins October first. So this is the first quarter of financials, which is October through December. On those financials, um, we, a lot of the revenues that are collected are collected on a quarterly basis, so some of these will not be received until the January, uh, collection, so it'll be reflected in the next one. But regardless, um, on the first, the, uh, graph you'll see on there, general fund revenues, which at this point is, um, two million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety year-to-date. And as Ms. Lopez mentioned, we should be at twenty-five percent. That's about eighteen point thirty-one percent for the general fund revenues. Uh, the general fund revenues consist of, of the following, uh, sources, which is property tax and sales tax being your largest. Property tax, we budgeted six hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. And year-to-date collections was three hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. And although that looks like, uh, it's not that much for the end of December, as I mentioned, we bill on a quarterly basis, I mean, we record it on a quarterly basis, so it'll probably be reflected on the next one. I wanted to direct your attention to the, uh, Jim Wells County election. I think it's in your packet, no?
Yes, if you, um, go through the end of your financials, past the charts, you're going to find the appraisal district report. On the top right-hand corner, it's dated January eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, it looks like this.
Is there a page, ma'am?
No, ma'am, there's not. Um, it'll be right after all your charts and graphs.
About fifteen pages.
If you'll keep going, Mr. Crisp, it should be right past that.
Perfect.
Do you find it? Got a notary. Okay. This is what the Jim Wells County Appraisal District collected through this December, which year-to-date collection is one million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-three, which is, uh, forty-one percent of the total tax levy. You can see we're on the far right, first numbers, year-to, uh, I'm sorry, taxes collected through this month of December, which is one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty. That is not reflected in, in these financials, so it'll show up in the next month. So, our collections is not bad, we're at forty-one percent of the total tax levy. That's for property tax. Sales tax shows that we budgeted one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, and we collected year-to-date, nine hundred and ninety thousand. Basically, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But we are a month behind any time we report this.
We're, we are a month behind, so we won't collect December still probably later this month. We haven't received it yet. We're two months behind on the sales tax. And if you, uh, there is, there is a handout that I wanted to, also in your, in your packet, that shows the budget versus actual, on the, uh, sales tax, it looks, like there's a graph in the bottom of it.
It's two pages before the last one.
Basically, what I wanted to point out there is, in order to compare, compare apples to apples, we budgeted four hundred and forty thousand per month. So that's eight hundred and eighty thousand for October and November. Our actual collections for October was four hundred and seventy-five thousand and eighty-eight dollars. And November was five hundred and, roughly about five hundred and fifteen thousand, so that's nine hundred and ninety thousand, seven dollars. So basically, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase from what we budgeted. So that adds up to about twelve point five percent increase. Now, if y'all recall from when we did our, our budget, uh, when we had our budget workshops, we checked with the Texas State Comptroller's Office, and they anticipated two and a half to three percent increase in, uh, in sales tax. So we far exceeded that, we're at twelve and a half percent. So that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And we went from one, uh, four twenty-eight to four forty?
To four forty. We, we factored in that three percent. The next one, as I mentioned, the property and sales tax are the largest one, but the next one is occupational mixed beverage tax, which is your alcohol tax. That's roughly at, um, five percent. Again, the, we receive it quarterly, so we have not received that one. Your franchise license and permits are your, uh, uh, building and health permits, your CFOs, certificate of occupancies, and your electric franchise. Again, okay, that just went away. That one, we're probably at, uh,
Screen saver.
Ten point twenty percent.
Jim?
We're about ten percent on that one. The next one is your intergovernmental. Uh, year-to-date budget was twenty-two thousand, seventy-five, and we're actually at twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. That's your Jim Wells County library. So on that one, we're actually above budget, we're at thirty percent, so that's, that's a good thing. Your charges for services, uh, that's your, uh, fingerprinting, uh, uh, copy charges, Anderson Park fees and so forth. Uh, we're at about thirteen percent on that one. Fines and forfeitures, uh, that's for municipal court. We're about twenty-six percent on that one. Miscellaneous revenue, that's the, uh, rental of the armory and the Boys and Girls Club. We're almost twenty-six percent there. And the interfund transfers, which is basically your transfers from your utility fund and solid waste fund to the general fund. We're at twenty-five percent there. Now, the second graph is going to show the general fund expenditures. Jim, a second. There it is. Okay, these are the expenditures for the general fund by department. Um, city, it's got city council, city clerk, administration, all the way through. I'm gonna concentrate on the ones that are above budget. General service was a little bit above budget, um, about thirty-three percent, where we should be at twenty-five percent. The reason for that is that we had a, a one, one-time TML payment, once-a-year payment, and that was a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. So that's the reason for, for the increase on that one. Your next one that had an increase, uh, well, actually, let me, let me step back. The fire department and police department are some of your, their biggest departments in the general fund, and they're both under budget, so that's a good thing. We got street maintenance, another large fund, parks and playground, all under budget. Um, the next one that's over budget is your library, but that's due to a, uh, software payment, once, uh, once-a-year software payment of about fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven. And the last one that's over budget is your interfund transfers. And, uh, that's due to, uh, a transfer that we do for the benefits trust fund, for the, some of the vacancies on there. The last chart that I wanted to go over, pretty much recaps everything on the summary sheet, which is, uh, your revenues versus expenditures for all major funds. First one being general fund, which shows that it's at a loss of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. As we mentioned, that does not include the sales tax for December. Your solid waste was actually, uh, at a profit of ninety-one thousand, five hundred and seventy. Your utility fund was at a profit of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. Your airport was at a profit of a hundred and twenty dollars, but that does include a four thousand, ten dollar monthly increase, that's a budgeted transfer. Golf course was at a profit of three ninety-eight, including a ten thousand, forty-seven dollar transfer. That's budgeted from the, uh, general fund. Your hotel occupancy tax fund, as Mr. Now had explained, that's a special revenue fund that's used for a special, uh, uh, functions. Uh, that one shows that it's in the negative forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five. Again, your, your hotel motel tax is not due till the end of January, so it's not gonna be reflected on these financials. It'll be reflected in the next months. But that one has a healthy fund balance. Your multi-use complex was in the negative forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine, and that does include a monthly transfer of twenty-nine thousand, thirty-four, budgeted transfer. But again, your, your revenues for the auditorium are seasonal, we're not in season right now. But they, they have been working hard and, uh, and securing some, uh, contracts. Their Alice and the Finney School District has a contract, Fremont School District has a contract with the auditorium. And, uh, also, uh, we, we were able to get, uh, about four swim meets in this particular quarter only. Two like in October, one in November, and one in December. So, um, uh, things are looking a little more positive. But that's basically your financials through December. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Mr. Molina, any questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Crisp?
If you can come back to me just a second.
Mr. Burke?
I threw a couple of things in my head.
Ms. Gatazko?
I think he answered with, um, just not having the, the buttons. Oh, wait.
No, I think, I think, um, I just wanted to, uh, first off, say that, that the presentation and the way it's been doing, being done this time around may not be as in-depth as we've seen in the past, but it does put it out there where people can see it. Uh, I commend you for putting that together. It makes it much more simple and then allows for us to ask questions later. If the community asks questions, it's, it's all there. They can see, they can come in and, you know, ask as well, so, uh, thank you for doing that. And just, just, uh, the interfund transfers actually happen on a couple of accounts, correct? We have it obviously like in the airport, we have it in, well, we have it just about in every one of them, correct?
The airport, the golf course, and the, the multi-use.
There's three, okay, just the three. What is that? Oh, that's the enterprise, nevermind. Okay. So no, I just, I just, uh, when I look at those numbers, we see good things, but that also considers the fact that we, we are having to feed some of these a little bit. But still, the, the numbers are, are looking good. I commend, uh, the departments for keeping up the good work, so. And thank you for putting it in front of us, so, that's it.
You're welcome. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What were those transfers for each one?
For each one? We had, uh, for the
Fourteen.
For the airport was four thousand, ten dollars for the month.
Okay.
Monthly, I'm sorry, monthly, monthly, for, for, that was for the three-quarter.
Is that, every month gets four thousand?
Yes, sir, monthly.
Okay.
And then the golf course had ten thousand, forty-seven dollars.
That's a month, right?
Vanessa, are those, is that correct, per month?
No, that's, that's, that's an annual.
That's for the quarter. That's for the quarter.
That's, yeah, that's for the quarter, yeah, that's three, every three months, because I know the golf course is like three thousand. Yeah, three thousand a month, the, the multi-use is somewhere around eight thousand, and the airport is like thirty-eight, three hundred and eighty or something real low like that, so.
The, uh, for the airport, it was four thousand, ten for the, for the quarter.
For the quarter, okay.
And then, and then for the year-to-date transfer was sixteen thousand, forty. That's for the whole year. And then on the golf course fund, it was ten thousand, forty-seven for this quarter. And then, uh, forty thousand, one eighty-eight for the whole year that was budgeted. And then the multi-use complex, twenty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars for the quarter. And then, uh, one hundred thousand, one thirty-eight for the year.
One hundred, one.
Thirty. Eighty-three hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay, Mr. Ramos, thank you so much. Great job, that's beautiful.
Thank you.
And very legible, very user-friendly.
I just wanna mention to the council that, um, monthly budget reports are going to every department. They're being reviewed by both myself and Mr. Ramos. If there's anything that is, um, outside the scope of where we are budgeted, we're meeting with the departments to determine what happened. Um, department heads are doing a wonderful job of maintaining their budgets and staying within their expenditures.
I did have one more request real quick in regards to the budget. We, we have been off a little bit. We've had some time off, per se. Um, and we kind of didn't really get the final, final numbers, uh, for the end of the year on some of this. Can we get that finalized numbers pushed out to the council and, and made, made, uh, public?
The, um, the information that we'll be able to provide will be unaudited numbers. Our audit is going on right now, and that will be coming to the council at the end of March. We will get, uh, finance to get that out, and we can send it out by, uh,
And that's understandable, because these numbers that we're presenting here today are unaudited numbers as well, so, just so that everybody's on the same page.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number six. Consider and act upon authorizing the city manager to remove accountant Melissa Santos as an authorized signer on the city of Alice Wells Fargo checking accounts.
So mayor, mayor and council, Wells Fargo has added a new division, uh, to their services. It's a government and institutional banking division that we fall under. The division is tailored to providing, um, banking solutions specifically for state and local governments. Um, this division was created in two thousand and seventeen, and to fulfill the requirements of our agreement to maintain transparency and also for compliance with our auditors, they are now requiring an official record in the form of minutes for any additions or deletions to our Wells Fargo accounts for the city of Alice. Um, Melissa voluntarily separated employment, and at this time, you will see a draft letter to the bank, with council's action and permission, we will proceed forward with removing her from the accounts and creating that official record.
Council, any questions? Mr. Burke?
No, I'm sorry. I, I don't have a question. Are you entertaining a motion? Well, I, I did, I did have a quick question real quick before.
Yes, sir.
Before. Do we have to assign somebody else? Is that council action that requires that as well?
No, sir. Any of the authorized signers, uh, would be able to submit the letter. It's just council understanding who's coming on or off the accounts and creating that official record.
And follow-up, who, right now, who is the two signatures they are?
There is a primary signature from, um, myself, Mr. Ramos, the Director of Finance, and, uh, Ms. Rivera, in the event that one of the two primary ones are not available.
Okay, council, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I'd like to move to authorizing the City Manager to remove the accountant, former accountant Melissa Sanchez as an authorized signer on Wells Fargo accounts.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? The motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven. Consider and act upon awarding of contracts for the purchasing of chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, Mr. Duarte, our Assistant Director of Public Works, will be walking the council through the bids that were received for chemicals.
Mayor, Council, and City Staff, good evening.
Good evening.
The Public Works Department received the bids that submitted from bid openings on Thursday, November the thirtieth of 2017 by various companies for the chemical use in the treatment of water and wastewater. Just to recap the bid process real quick. Fourteen days prior to bid opening date, we advertised to whomever, whoever wants to bid on our chemical that are used in both the water and wastewater, as long as they can meet the specifications set forth in those packets. Twenty-six packets were mailed out, eight were received on the eight out of the ten items that are used for that treatment process. If you look at your attachments, you should have tabulation sheets for the one-year and the two-year bids that were received. I want to make a couple of notes on the one-year bid. Number one is that Chemtrade, if you look at the bottom of that spreadsheet, submitted a bid packet on November twenty-eighth and also one on November the thirtieth. They did call, or they did notify us, that they wanted to pull their November twenty-eighth packet. So they still met the deadline on November the thirtieth. Also, on item number four on LAS, Univar bid was for zero point one-six per gallon. They did reach out to us to let us know that that was not the correct bid. The correct bid was one point six-three-eight-four. Since that was something that's done after the fact, we couldn't accept that bid anyway. Also, on item number five, Rentag on Caustic, they did notify us that that one dollar and thirteen cent per gallon was not correct. It was two dollars and twenty-six cents. Of the ten items that are used in water and wastewater treatment, eight were up for bid. Item eight, Polymer, is under contract. Item ten, Sodium Chloride, is under contract. The rest of the items were out for bid this year. Seven of the eight are used for, at the water treatment plant. Two of those eight are used at wastewater. The common chemical there between water and wastewater is chlorine gas. Based on the tab sheets, it is my recommendation for counsel approval for one-year contract, item number five, Liquid Caustic Soda, at a dollar, one point eight-nine, be awarded to Chemtrade. Chlorine, item number six, Chlorine Gas, at six ninety-eight per ton, be awarded to Dixie Petro or DPC. Item number nine, at eight hundred and fourteen dollars per ton for Sulfur Dioxide, be awarded to DPC. Under the two-year contract, item number one, Liquid Alum, at zero point five-four-five-seven, be awarded to Chemtrade. Item two, Liquid Alum with one percent copric acid, zero point seven-four-six-seven, be awarded to Chemtrade. The Liquid Alum with two percent copric at zero point eight-seven-seven-five, be awarded to Chemtrade. Item four, the LAS, at zero point nine-zero-four-zero, be awarded to Chemtrade. And item number seven, at one point eight-zero, be awarded to Penko for Fluorosillicic Acid, Fluoride. I do have a spreadsheet that I made real quick earlier today. Pat, you want to pass this on? It's just a comparison from what we're currently paying right now to the one-year bid and the two-year bid.
This is an unusual trend for me when I look at this, because the two-year bid actually carries a higher price.
Right.
You know, normally, when you get a longer term, it goes down, but I guess because it's a consumable
Right.
supply and demand.
Right. And hopefully, when I do cover this comparison, it'll shed a better light on that. I'm going to take this item number one, which is Alum. Currently, we're paying zero point four-nine-nine-eight per gallon. A load at forty-four hundred gallons per load is two thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. At their one-year bid of zero point five-two-six-eight, that's an increase of zero point zero-two-seven. That's a load will be two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Their two-year bid is zero point five-four-five-seven cents per gallon. That is an increase of zero point zero-four-five-nine from what we're currently paying right now. But when you look at that price versus the one-year bid, it's an increase of point zero-one-eight-nine per gallon. And it continues on down that spreadsheet where the two-year bid, it's not the savings right away, but you're locking in that price.
Is that a trend that we see on some of these items where we might see a three percent increase on a one-year? Or we see a four percent, seven percent, twelve percent?
The only items that there is a savings is going to be the LAS, which is item number one, two, three, four on that spreadsheet. Currently, it's at a zero point nine-nine-five. One-year contract is at a zero point eight-six-eight-six, and the two-years is zero point nine-zero-four. So slight increase there from one-year to two-year, but we're locking it in at that two-year price. The other one is going to be the the fluoride. Currently, it's at three dollars and thirty-seven cents. A one-year bid is one dollar, seventy-three cents, and the two-years, a dollar, eighty. I'll take questions.
Counsel, any questions?
And all these companies, you've been doing business with most of these companies, if not all of them?
All of them, yes, sir.
Mr. Chris?
And we saw this trend when you presented it during the budget season.
Correct.
Where you would send out twenty-something, and I think at that point, you got back four or something like that for that mid-year
Right, correct.
contract, so.
Mr. Molina, any questions? There are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. On Agenda Item Number Seven.
Mayor, I make a motion that we award the contracts as presented and recommended by our Assistant Public Works Director.
Very good, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And no opposed? The motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duarte. Thank you.
That was suffice, right? John? Okay. I know there's, I didn't want to have to read out every one of those, because I wouldn't be able to say a bunch of those names.
Agenda Item Number Eight. Consider and act upon adopting a resolution suspending the effective date for ninety days in connection with the rate increase filing made on or about November sixteenth, 2017 by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, DBA Centerpoint Energy Entex, and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas for its South Texas Division.
Mayor and Counsel, before you, this evening is a resolution for the council's consideration to impose a ninety-day suspension on a proposed rate increase that Centerpoint Energy is now considering. On or about November sixteenth, they submitted their letter of intent to increase these rates. The city belongs to a membership of other municipalities. It is the AMC or ACM, the Alliance of Centerpoint Municipalities, and we are being served on this by Mr. Adara with the law firm of Adara Law and Associates. He has represented the city in the past in these types of cases and is representing the city in this case as well. The letter of intent was filed shortly after the election in November. By the time canvassing was done on the fourteenth, we received the letter on the sixteenth, and thus, with no quorum, we haven't been able to bring this to counsel for consideration. Initially, action had to have been done by December twenty-first. In the absence of a quorum, we asked for an extension of time from Centerpoint Energy, and they had given us till January thirty-first. Seeing as how we just have canvassing on the twenty-ninth, we have requested an additional extension to February twenty-eighth, 2018. If the council continues or approves tonight the resolution, what would happen is that until March twenty-first, 2018, Centerpoint would have to suspend that rate increase, which would go to any consumer of Centerpoint Energy, any resident within the City of Alice.
Counsel, discussion? Any questions?
It's just kind of a given. Just so that it kind of puts it out there. The idea behind this is we save businesses and citizens money on their gas, on their Centerpoint bill in excess of five hundred and, and not just Alice, but this is the region, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So most cities do this. We're going to participate in it as well to save our citizens some money.
All the other cities have approved resolutions. It's pending resolution from the City of Alice.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution suspending the effective date for ninety days in connection with the rate increase filed, made or on or about November sixteenth, 2017, by Centerpoint Energy Resources.
Very good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? Motion stands as stated. Agenda Item Number Nine. Consider and act upon, A, renewal of contract for the collection of fines and fees from Lineberger, Godden, Blair, and Sampson LLP, or B, authorizing the interim City Manager to exercise the sixty-day notification provision pursuant to Article 6.02 of the Agreement between the City of Alice and Lineberger, Godden, Blair, and Sampson LLP, and authorizing the City of Alice to proceed with issuance of requests for qualifications for the collection of fines and fees.
Mayor and Counsel, during budget discussions, there was a direction given by the council for us to begin reviewing all contracts, centralizing them, and identifying possible revenue streams. In that process, Mr. Ramos, who is over Municipal Court, came across the contract for Lineberger. There's a copy of it in your packet. The City of Alice has been with Lineberger for the collections of fines and fees in Municipal Court since August of 2010, and in April of 2015, the contract in your packet was entered into. It is for a three-year term that will be expiring April of 2018. The contract has a termination provision that we need to consider giving sixty days written notification to the firm or the contract automatically renews for one year. The deadline to submit this notification, should the council wish to proceed forward, is February eighth, 2018. Should counsel choose to go down that route, Mr. Ramos would like to proceed with a request for qualifications, not only for the fines that are being collected in Municipal Court, but also to expand that scope of service in that RFQ to include collections of mechanic's liens, past due accounts in the Water Department, and other revenue streams that he probably could elaborate more on. There is no issue with the services that are being provided by Lineberger. This is simply an item for counsel's consideration and discussion to see how they feel about proceeding forward with either option. The contract we currently have does not cost the City of Alice any money. It is written in that the monies, there's a thirty percent fee that is tacked on to the collections that Lineberger is doing, and that is how they receive their payment.
Mr. Molina, any questions or comments?
Currently, the contract only covers fines and fees, and the RFQ process would allow us to bring everything together.
There's, and Vasquez can tell you is that, as you know, and I'll answer this with Diana's permission, but in regards to this, is that there were some issues that came up with our collection of mechanic's liens, and that in discussions, felt it was best to allow or discuss it with Lineberger to collect those from us as well. That it would take an additional contract to collect those, to collect those fees. But this is something that Mr. Ramos and I had discussed, and that what he'd like to do is he'd like to try to work everything together, whether it's a different collection agreement or not. And he's going to know financial situations better than me, and he feels that it's better to get the bang for the buck, to do it all at the same time. And so it's really not going to be one agreement. It would be separate agreements. But not approving this agenda item or allowing for, not allowing staff to give the notification, just leaving the things the way they are, would not keep Lineberger and the city from working out a deal on collection of our mechanic's liens.
But also, by issuing the letter, it doesn't eliminate them by no means, right?
No means it does not, and it just kind of puts everything out there for consideration.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having us. Just real quick, my name is Nancy Vasquez. I'm an attorney with Lineberger, Godden, Blair, and Sampson. Along with me is our Office Manager, Robert Webas, and Joanne Bettes, who works here in our Alice office, and Gracie, who is our, Gracie Martinez, who's our fees and fines liaison. We caught wind of the agenda item today approximately at two o'clock, so we were not able to put a full presentation before you, but we did do a bird's eye view of what we have been doing for the City of Alice. We are in partnership already with you all in the collection of your delinquent taxes. And we don't, I mean, from our vantage, you know, getting the bang for the buck, we do this as a collection. It's cost-free to the City of Alice. The defendant on the fees and fines, they are the ones that pay our fee pursuant to the criminal code. So this is a cost-free collection program that we do for you all. We just have a real quick summary of what we have done for you all since the exception of the contract. And basically, you can see that we've sent out over thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five letters. We've updated phone addresses and phone numbers through our skip tracing, which has been over four thousand, three hundred and two accounts. We've made outbound calls, thirty-three thousand, more than thirty-three thousand outbound calls. We've received one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight calls. We've been assigned six thousand, over six thousand citations, representing over one point seven million dollars. All accounts right now pending, there's currently pending outgoing three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six, which represents over nine hundred thousand dollars. Good addresses on those have been two hundred and sixty, over two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. The returned mail that we've received in our office have been over five hundred and ninety-five, and there have been six with no addresses. You can see the offense age that has been given us to date. And over the three years, you can see that's the biggest part there. Because the more, the older the age of the case and placement, that's going to be harder to collect. During this time, the collections have been forty-eight percent, which is a very excellent rate. We also represent the City of Portland, City of Corpus Christi, and I don't, like I said, since we only got knowledge of this being on the agenda today too, I didn't bring stats, but I could love to give you a better, more informed summary of what we do. But forty-eight percent on fees and fines is very good. The City of Portland has, I think, seventeen percent on their fees and fines. And as Ms. Lopez was saying, generally speaking, there's not anything that you all need to do. If you guys want to look into it, I know that the mechanic's liens actually goes hand-in-hand with our avalorum that we do, because that would be included in our avalorum contract, I mean, that the, I mean, in the lawsuit. The mechanic's lien is a whole separate, whole separate contract, then the fees and fines, or the collection of avalorum taxes. It has its own contract. That is something that we can do. We do that for other municipalities. You know, we've been having a good relationship with the City of Alice. We want to continue that relationship with the City of Alice. We have not heard of any We have not heard of any concern that's been brought to our attention, I believe we're doing a very good job, and like I said, I don't believe that there's any action that the council, you know, I would ask that the council go ahead and do no action, which is continue to let us be your attorney for the fees and fines, and have this renewed for one year, and in the meantime, we can come back and give you a more extensive outline of what we've done, also our collections on our delinquent avalorum, and at that point, also you can take a look at, and we would be more than interested in getting your mechanic's lien, because like I said, that goes hand-in-hand with our delinquent lawsuits, because we would put that amount in our delinquent lawsuits. The thing is also, any other firm that you're going to have, we are the leaders in the industry, we are not only in Texas, we're statewide. The reason we're the leaders in the industry is because we have so much technology, IT, I don't believe that there's any other firm that's going to be able to represent you as we are, we, again, we have a local office here, we're in Corpus Christi, our call centers are in Houston and San Antonio. Like I said, I don't think that there's anything broken on our behalf, and we would ask the council to go ahead and let the one-year extension go ahead and be done.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Vasquez?
Currently, under our contract with our fines and fees, when it goes to her, when we're going to collect?
Yes, ma'am.
We send out notices also, or is it just strictly through this?
I believe...
How does this?
Y'all pick up after 60 days.
After 60 days, it's turned over to us, that is correct.
So, for the first 60 days, municipal court staff is sending out, yes, ma'am, after 60 days, the report is sent over to Lineberger's office, and they begin the process of trying to collect through letters, phone calls, and other methods.
We do the warrant roundup as well.
And you have a 49%?
48%.
48%.
Which is very good, like I said, the City of Portland has 17, and I wasn't able to get a lot of information, since we just found out about that, this was on the agenda after 2:00, so we're just trying to scramble to put together just the one-page summary, but 48%, I was talking to our managing partner, Paul Chapa, and he was indicating, and he wanted me to make sure and stress that, 48% is a very good percentage rate, and so, you know, I don't think that there's anything broken, like I said, I've talked to my staff, I've talked to the IT lady that does the fees and fines, and we're not aware of anything of why you all should change, we're not aware of any problems, and again, we're open and happy to take any suggestions that staff might make to us, we want to keep in partnership with you all, and that's what we would request, that we continue to serve you, and you all extend the contract for one year.
Ms. Vasquez, any other questions?
Who's your main contact for the city?
That would be, I'm sorry, municipal court manager, Joanne Ramon.
And I believe, and Gracie Martinez speaks to her probably on a maybe month-and-a-half basis, but Sharon is speaking with her, or getting emails monthly because of the uploads on the data.
The pool files. Like I stressed, there's no issue or concern from staff at any point that they're not, they're exceeding, they're a very reputable firm and exceed the standards, it's just that at this point, we wanted to bring it to council's attention for their consideration, and also, like I mentioned, not just mechanic's liens, but possibly also delinquent accounts, maybe what's in 60 days collections, Mr. Ramos is just trying to expand and cast that net out as far as possible. Ms. Vasquez, any further questions? Mr. Burke?
Yes, Diana, just a clarification, you were discussing the rate that they charge for, did you say 30%?
Yes, I believe it's 30%.
How does that match the industry standard?
That is the industry... That is the industry standard, in the contract that you have before you, on the, let's see, page two, under the Article 103.0031, the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, that allowed back in June the 18th, 2003, that the cities, municipalities are able to provide to a vendor, which is us, more than 30 days past due, and are able to provide a fee of 30%. That is the industry standard, that's what all the firms are going to charge.
So, all right.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Was that part of your consideration?
Well, one of the areas that we were looking at is, well, 30% is standard, it can be up to 30%, is my understanding, and we can check with legal. Looking at individuals who, after two years, still haven't, we haven't been able to collect, and now they haven't been able to pay, and we're tacking a fee on top of that. That is one topic of discussion, it's not the only topic of discussion, 30% is standard through the industry, and that is what is in the agreement. Any other questions, Ms. Burke? So, if I can just clarify, the little report that you were able to put together, it is eight years, correct?
This is, yes, August 2010 through January 2018.
So, the 48% accounts for eight years, or per year?
Where'd you get them?
Total collections.
Yes, for a total of a year.
For the eight years, that's correct.
Eight years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, to my understanding, it's been, it's worked, but of course, we always strive for better, and it's not that nothing was done wrong, I don't think, I think it's just to grow and maybe redo the contract where we can maximize for our citizens what we're doing in conjunction with you all. I believe that's why I stand on that, I understand. Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I do have just a couple of things, so right now, the contract that we are, that we, the contracts that we have in place with Lineberger are the avalorum tax, and the outstanding avalorum, and the fines, and fines and fees, correct?
Yes.
Now, that 30% is actually tacked on top, $100 fine, 130 now, doesn't seem like a lot, $500 fine, $650 does seem like a lot. When you're seeing these returns, your 48% return, do you feel, do we feel, that that 30% actually hinders what could be a 55% return, a 60% return, because in the end, for the city, the bigger that percentage, the more the city has a return, you know what I mean? So, the idea of it being 30%, do you feel, I mean...
I feel that, I think it's more of incentive, just like the avalorum taxation, when we send out the letter telling them, if you don't pay, right now, everybody should have paid their taxes on January the 31st, right now, February the 1st, they became delinquent. The new year is going to turn over to our law firm come July the 1st, we send that May Resolution letter out in May, telling them, you are delinquent, come, we send a May Resolution letter out telling them, you're delinquent, and attorney's fees are going to attach, we see that there's more of incentive for them to pay, because they don't want our fee attaching.
The difference on that is, is avalorm taxes, you know, is going out, fines and penalties, fines and fees and penalties, yeah, they broke the law, right, is one thing, but you're not getting that until after the fact, anyway, they're already behind, they're already behind the eight ball, so now we're just tacking it on top, too, that's one of the things, because that's the one we're talking about here, is the fines, fees, you know, fines and fees with the added on, that penalty. Don't get me wrong, 48%, it's a good number.
Yes, it is.
It's a good number, and I'm hoping that that number has increased over the last, with technology and so forth, to make it easier for you to do your job in the last eight years, that that actually, you know, is more like 60% maybe in the last few years, but the older years actually brought that percentage down. So, again, the reason I say this is because, I mean, a seatbelt ticket is $150, you don't pay that, now you're sitting on a, what is it, a $185, you know, and it just adds up. Now, is there a letter that goes out as soon as you get it that gives them that lower rate? I mean, or is it 30% the first time that y'all send that letter out?
It's 60 days after it gets turned over to us, fees are automatically imposed, I'm not sure with the letter from the city, if it has any language to that, when they send out prior to the 60 days, if it has the language on there, but like I said, I am, right now, I don't handle the day-to-day fees and fines, I handle the day-to-day avalorum, so I would need to get a copy of what Joanne Bettis would send out, what those notices would send out, because I can't not sit down here and tell you yes or no, because I do not know the answer to that question.
Mr. Chris, any other?
And then, a question for city staff, and I guess, is, why do we wait the 60 if the Code 103.0031 allows for us to turn it over at 30 days? I mean, what has instituted the 60?
60 days.
Oh, I thought it says, I could have swore, I thought I heard you say 30 days, I wrote down something there.
It says more than 60, more than 60 days past due.
Okay, no, I wrote, I thought...
Yes.
Okay.
That's to give them the opportunity, the city, to give the opportunity to collect prior to any fees being incurred. After the 60 days, then it's going to be turned over to our law firm for us to start collecting it, and on that 60, when we receive that, on that 61st day, that's when the penalty will increase. Like I said, I mean, this is a, you know, cost-free collection program for the city, I believe that the industry standard is what everybody else is charging as well, and again, I would say, you know, we have a very good working relationship with you all, we have an Alice office here, the other firms don't have, they're going to be Houston or Austin, they're not going to be here in Corpus or in Alice. So, you all went out for an RFP a couple of years ago, and we won that RFP.
Actually, 2015, when the contract was awarded, there was no RFQ that went out, it was a council decision, which is why it's being brought back to the council.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because I remember I was here, and there was another firm here that, I think, during that time period...
I think sub-meetings before, there had been a presentation given, but ultimately, the council went ahead and did not do an RFQ.
That's right, that's right. I think for the fact being that, you know, we are, again, the leaders in our industry, we're local, we're here, and, you know, you're going to see us more often than you're going to see anyone from Austin or Houston.
And again, I don't think that's, I don't think it's a concern with quality, it's just the whole fact that we're trying to do a more transparent type of approach to contracts and things like that, and I feel that maybe this wasn't very transparent maybe, at that time. Counsel, any other questions?
Let's have one, you mentioned the City of Portland is 17%, what do you mean by that?
That's what Robert told me earlier, when he was letting me know that, your rate is 48%, their rate is 17% of the collection return on there.
Under your?
Under ours, yeah, so, you know, it just depends also if the staff turns over everything on the 61st day, then we can get it, we can pursue that. Some clients give us the things on the 61st day, other clients hold on to it, and so, I know that there had been some, if a client doesn't turn over the data reports, of course, we can't tackle them, so that was some of the issues there, that we were not getting them on a monthly basis. Here, you know, I believe that everything is going well with staff, like I said, since I did only caught wind of this today about 2:00, I haven't gone to see every placement, forgetting every placement every single month, because I was not aware that this was on the council's agenda today, but, so I would have more answers for you, like I said, we were scrambling at the last minute to just put something together.
So, I guess what staff would like to see is to add, Mr. Ramos, if I could, mechanic's liens to this contract?
It's a whole separate animal. But we would do that as well, we could come back and present mechanic's liens for your mowing and demolition liens, we do that for the City of Portland, City of Corpus Christi, for most of the surrounding areas, we do do that, but it's done, it's not a fees and fines collections contract, it's a total different, separate contract, and because we're avalorum attorneys, and we're here again locally, when we do collect the city municipal, the mowing and demo, and it's in a lawsuit, you can see the City of Alice, Alice ISD, Jimwells County, and then there'll be another one, it's the City of Alice Special Assessments, and it would have what those mowing liens would be, so when we go to court, we would go to court on behalf of the city school and county, and the special assessments for the City of Alice as well, in the delinquent avalorum lawsuit. So, that's what's advantageous to you all, is to have the same attorneys for the avalorum, because it directly corresponds into our work that we do for you already. But that is something that, yes, we want to do, that's not a problem, but that would be a whole separate contract, we could get a proposal over, come back over here, present that contract for you all for consideration.
And that took place, the awarding of the contract took place in April of 2015?
15.
So, that was even before the previous council that was awarded?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, in 2010, excuse me, August 2010, that's when we received it with Jim Irk's office and our office, so we've been serving you all since 2010.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time, on agenda item number nine.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the 60-day notification as stated, and enter into an RFQ process for all items listed, being mechanic's liens, the water department collections, taxes, avalorm tax collections, and fines and fees collections as well.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You opposed?
No.
Aye, so, the ayes have it, motion stands as stated.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, agenda item number 10, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing approval of offer to purchase tax sale property described as Lot 5, Block 116-D, original townsite addition according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in Volume 1, page 64, map records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor and counsel, I was informed today at 3:00 PM that there has been another offer received on this property, the offer was received on January 14th, at this time, I'm asking the council to table this item, so that the firm can continue with their bid process and bring back to us the most advantageous offer.
Counsel?
Motion, agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is tabled. Okay. Ms. Lopez, can you please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, so, on Saturday, when we were posting agenda, there was a three-page agenda. Unfortunately, only Page 1 and 3 were posted appropriately, both on the bulletin board and on the City of Alice website. It was a issue that ultimately falls on my shoulders, and my position as interim city manager, I apologize for the issue and any inconvenience it may have caused, it has been addressed, and measures are now in place to ensure that this does not happen again. I have no excuse, but would like to convey to the council that the courage of leadership is giving others an opportunity to succeed, and even though you are the leader, you bear the responsibility for making sure that things get done, I take full responsibility for this, and take ownership of the mistake, and my apologies to the council. Because of this issue, Items 11 through 15 were not properly posted, and at this time, council will not be able to take those items for consideration.
Okay, thank you. So, legal, we can proceed to 16?
Not really. We've got...
but non-posted item, to the prior item. And it refers directly to action on an item that was not posted and not given notification. Secondarily, you've got, in that same item, it anticipates discussion that was not called under an appropriate notice item. It says we're going to come back and take action out of executive session based upon the discussion on the prior item. And finally, it presumes that we have resumed from an executive session that could not be called. And so factually, those are the three problems that we have. Now legally, where we run into is the rule that the Supreme Court has identified in this situation, it would be a literal application rule. And it means you're going to literally apply the terms of the statute along with the postings that you, the language in the postings that are actually there. And that we don't, we are not in literal compliance with the statute and with what's been posted. And so we have a problem with that. Secondarily, there is Attorney General opinion, Supreme Court rulings, that talk about the more important the item is, the more specific the notification needs to be. And then any vagueness or any possibility of, and I think the word "any" potentially caused confusion, tends to violate the purposes of the Open Meetings Act. And it puts us in a situation where, very clearly, that there could be vagueness or confusion in regards to that issue. And then the third legal issue we have is that the purposes of the Act, and as interpreted by our Texas Supreme Court, is that we need to be consistent with our prior postings and prior actions, and then what has been done. And clearly, we wouldn't be following consistency with executive session item stated, and then discussion, and then coming out and taking action. Now, you've got, A, the factual problems, B, how the legal application of those factual problems, then C, the consequences. Any action taken not in compliance with 551 of the Government Code is going to be void. So anything that we take, actions we take in violation of that are going to be void, principally. That's where we start. And then after that, then if somebody wants to cause a row or look at it, then we fall into a situation where, okay, so it's automatically void, but then we look to see if there was an intent or a, with knowledge failing to follow the law. Then we look at possible criminal consequences. And that, given the nature of these items, these three items that are in there, I think that, you know, the fact of the sale of property and some issues that are raised with those, I think that there are definitely issues and could be issues raised by individuals in the community in those regards. And so it would be my, it would be my legal opinion, my statement, that we should not address the items in sixteen tonight.
Counsel, any questions, comments, complaints?
I made my complaints earlier. Yeah. I just, you know, I think we're not happy with it. I mean, obviously, because we had several grant items. It's not just sixteen in general, just the whole thing about the grant items. But, you know, mistakes happen, we move forward, we continue. This whole thing about full transparency is, I think, is real strong with this council. So it may not, in my opinion, it, I think, you know, six in one hand and half dozen in the other. I'm not an attorney, because it is, it was posted, but it does reflect. So I'd rather be fully transparent than have my actions, which are always questioned, anyway, questioned for obvious reasons, so.
All right. Mr. Crisp? Ms. Ramonina?
They can just be pushed over to the next meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
No time sensitive?
No, none of them are time-sensitive. They'll be taken over to the meeting on Tuesday.
Ms. Carrasco? And I, myself, have made my frustrations known, because trying to move our city forward, we've wasted a lot of time already with the whole turmoil that we've experienced in this. I am going to express my frustration with this. But, Mr. Lemon, I will have to listen to your advice at this time, because they are sensitive issues. And I, myself, like Mr. Crisp, we don't want to have our discussions questioned or invalidated due to a mistake. So at this time, would we be able to go to seventeen and adjourn? And, okay. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, adjourn and/or consider and act upon adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. The time is now eight oh six, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.